Could I ask that Clerk Seagrest call the roll?
Trustee Anthony.
Present.
Trustee Foster.
Good evening.
Trustee Graham Hudek.
Good evening.
The record will let Clerk Seagrest is in attendance. Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
Trustee Snyderman.
I am present.
And Supervisor Williams.
Hello. Call for motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Those who favor the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We have a single item on the agenda this evening for the study session, and that is recycling. And Jade, if you could lead us off, I see you have a host of supporters here tonight to help get us through this, so, all you Jade.
All right. Okay, well, thanks everybody for attending. We are going to talk about recycling, the state of recycling in Canton Township, and probably look at some activities and some things we can do in the future in regards to recycling. But I'd like to take a minute and introduce everyone that's over here this evening. We have Brad Lear, who is our newest DPW manager of last Monday, so we're glad to have him. We have some folks from GFL over here. We have Joe, Evan, and Paul, welcome them. We also have Matt and Jim from Resource Recycling Systems. They are kind of, they are experts in the field of recycling. I believe RRS has been in business for about 40 years.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. Matt recently has come to RRS from the city of Ann Arbor, very familiar with the Washtenaw County project. And at the end, we have Hannah, who is from Congresswoman Stevens' office, who will give us a little update about what the Congresswoman is doing in regards to recycling. I did want to say that I did speak with Elizabeth Garver, who is the Waste Minimalization and Recycling Specialist with the state of Michigan, and she is our representative. She could not be here this evening, but we will be setting up a meeting to talk about some things and some possible funding levels at the state level, and how that can roll down to the township. So with that, we will kind of kick things off and go through a short presentation, and then open it up for some discussion at the end, address some questions. I did receive some questions. You'll see some at the very end of your packet. They're not all in here that I received, because some I didn't get until today, so this was already put into place, but we can still get those questions answered and have discussion at the end. And up here on the screen, you can see since January of 2017, this is the overall solid waste collection for Canton Township. Just kind of shows you the trends. The refuse is in orange or brown, recycling is in green, and then yard waste is in blue. This is just pulling out the recycling. Canton recycles approximately 15 percent of all of its waste. From a source that I found, it looks like the national average is about 25 percent. And I'll show you something in a slide that'll make you feel a little bit better about how we're, how we weigh against some of the other municipalities around us. But you can see recycling's been pretty steady since the curbside single stream was introduced, and it shows about 400 tons per month is what we are recycling. This breaks down in the area recycling per person, and you can see the average person for Canton Township is about 250 pounds on an annual basis. So some of the trends that we're seeing, obviously, everybody is aware of what's been out in the media, but some states and cities are taking, looking at banning and different types of recyclables and making some changes. And at this point, I would like to turn it over to RRS, who's going to talk about some of the other trends that they see and can speak to some of the bullets on this page.
Sure. Thank you, and pleasure to be here and to have a chance to talk recycling, something we love to do, have been doing for many years. We pulled together a few points here, just as background apologies for the small type, but the points are pretty simple. And, you know, in this turbulent time of the recycling markets, and there'll be some discussion about it later, there's also what's happening in the actual infrastructure, the recycling facilities, the folks that operate them, and the kinds of pressures it's putting on you, both in terms of financial and cost, but also in terms of just the simple thing of what are we supposed to do? And so what we wanted to highlight is there's actually a number of trends that are completely out of your control that just give you a sense of what's happening out there. And one of them is there's a significant amount of consolidation going on in the industry right now, the whole waste industry. And you may or may not know, for example, that waste management is in the acquisition process with Advanced, which is one of the other big haulers, along with GFL and a few others in the region. GFL itself has also nationally acquired another large hauling enterprise, Waste Industries, that allows it to expand in other parts of the U.S., and has also acquired a major force in the recycled paper business, Canadian Fibers. And so these are, in some sense, moves that impact in some level, gives GFL a lot more capabilities, but it's probably going to take some time to tap into that. And it also means with the acquisition of Advanced by Waste that there's less competition out there for you at the time that you would go out to the market to, you know, seek new hauling prices two or three years from now. And then there's a similar thing going on in the actual recycling facilities. These are, you know, this is the place your material goes. There's a whole fleet of, you know, five or six of these facilities in southeast Michigan. And things that are happening nationally are also impacting us locally. And there's really three trends. One is that paper companies are developing their own recycling facility infrastructure out there, that communities are sending their recyclables to. And the interesting thing to note about that is, what do you think a paper company wants? They want paper. And they sort of take the rest of the materials as a, hey, we got to do this. But some of the fluctuations in what you're hearing about what can and cannot be taken is coming from them. And some of those partners are major partners, including a company here that's been talking quite a bit with Michigan, Pratt Industries, that's sourcing material for two very large mills in Indiana and Ohio that have started up in, you know, almost last a few weeks ago, in one case, and then a year or two ago. They need a million tons a year of paper from, you know, the surrounding areas, Michigan, Indiana, Wisconsin, Illinois, et cetera. So that's kind of a force that has some impact locally. Secondly, you actually have a consolidation of recycling facilities in the industry, in the hauling industry. In other words, integrated companies that own landfills, they provide hauling services, and they also increasingly own the recycling capacity as well. And you'll see from the numbers up there that roughly about 50-plus percent of all the recycling facilities fit in that category. And then lastly, there's publicly owned and either owned or operated recycling facilities as well. You've got an example of that in Oakland County, the southeast Oakland County Authority that owns and operates its own facility. And roughly about, you know, 10 percent of the recycling facilities are out there that are that model as well. And they all work, but they all have challenges, and right now, all of them have challenges. And that's really the last point that we might make, is that locally, there's some very significant developments that include, and a little bit of this is a couple of year back history, but you used to have an independent recycling facility operator in the region, Republic, I'm sorry, Rec Community, didn't do any hauling, wasn't involved in the trash business at all. Those facilities in southeast Michigan were acquired by Republic, which is one of the major hauling companies, competitor to GFL and Waste Management, et cetera. That acquisition is roughly about two years old now, and as a result of that acquisition, they, it's sort of like, you know, they have to, a company like GFL has to go use their competitor in order to get the recycling process. And as you can imagine, this is not the best situation from a pricing point of view. And then you throw the market turbulence on top of that, and that's one of the elements that's turned things topsy-turvy. The second point we make is the Ann Arbor recycling facility shut down a few years back, and that was actually one of the more publicly controlled facilities that kept tipping fees for recyclables down at a moderate rate. Take that out, and all of a sudden, you have less, if you will, options for companies and communities. And then thirdly, Waste Management also acquired another independent, you know, company, Green Star, that again had no connections to the waste industry. So whereas in the earlier bullet, we have three categories now, there used to be a fourth category, which are these independent recycling facilities. There aren't too many of those left now. There aren't any of them left here in this area now. And then the last couple of points is that there's actually developments in this space. You wouldn't think it with the markets being so difficult, but out of, you know, out of tough times creates opportunity. And there are actually a number of players, including companies like Pratt, the GLF's own possible trajectories, a company named Mterra out of Canada, and then possibly even some public facilities that are all possibly new recycling facilities that might become available to you for options. And then it's good to know, in the context of all that, that in this time with the tough markets that you probably have heard of and know that there's some materials that should be ending up in recycling facilities that aren't, and that's certainly an issue that isn't going to make anybody comfortable. But that's part of the backdrop of the current recycling facility infrastructure in the region, so I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Jim. Some of the other concerns and problems that most of you are aware of is obviously in January of 18, China stopped, put a ban on recyclables, and that impacted the market tremendously, which I think was kind of what started this whole process. Recycling used to generate income for a lot of communities. Now it's actually costing communities money. Depends on how your contract was set up, but that is something that is really strapping some local communities. And then you have the concerns of contaminated loads and the absence of clean recycling, which are some of the things that we're dealing here locally. And I put some photos in here, these are from GFL, of some loads that you can see are absolutely contaminated. So we need to put together an education process for our community and get our residents to start recycling a little bit smarter. But you can, this is just a sample. I think I was sent four or five emails, and they all very much looked the same. You can see there's a two-by-four in one that is not a recyclable material. I don't know if GFL has any comments on any of these.
The first photo is clearly, it's got a lot of yuck and debris, liquid yuck. So clearly that's, what's the second one there? What's wrong with that one or not good about that one?
It's an exhaust pipe.
Oh, steel's not recyclable? In a bin?
Not like that, it's not.
No?
No.
Okay.
Didn't know that. The third one had two-by-four in it, and the fourth one is the plastic and a piece of gutter.
So again, some of the things that we may think are recyclable and actually are not, and we have a duty to educate the public and right the wrong. So, kind of jumping topics here, and we'll get back to the education piece, but Hannah is here from Congresswoman Stevens' office, and I know there's a lot of words up on the screen, but there was too much that they sent me that I just couldn't cut out, because she's obviously been very busy and she's pretty passionate about recycling. So I'm going to turn it over to Hannah to talk about some of her initiatives, and just to let you know that there's, obviously, this is a federal focus as well.
Yeah. Okay. Awesome. So, yeah, like Jade was saying, ooh, it's loud. Congresswoman Stevens is definitely very passionate about recycling, and, I mean, just this list alone is kind of a bunch of examples of how she's been working toward creating a smart recycling strategy moving forward. So I'm just going to touch on each of these points and talk about them a little bit briefly. So the first two are proposals. So the first one is a bill proposal to incentivize public education efforts for municipal recycling facilities, and to identify opportunities for strategic federal investments in recycling infrastructure across the country. So she recently did a tour around the whole district and talked to local municipalities to find out what some of the major concerns that they have are, and almost everyone said infrastructure. And now with the recent ban from China that happened in January 2018, we're seeing a lot of strain on our local municipalities, and so we're trying to find a way forward. And so in relation to that, she launched a Plastic Solutions Task Force to find stakeholders who could speak more on what we can do in terms of infrastructure and the public education efforts that would be most beneficial. She also led a letter to the Secretary of Commerce and the EPA Administration. And in that letter, she asked the EPA three main questions. One was, why has there not been updated data on recycling, composting, landfilling, and other kind of initiatives with those materials? The latest data was from 2015. The second question that she asked was, how are we going to, how is the EPA going to build a national recycling strategy for the infrastructure, and how will the EPA mitigate the ongoing impacts of China's plastic ban? And the EPA did respond, but their response wasn't ideal. They said that, you know, they're doing a couple of things, but the Congresswoman would like to see a little bit more from them, and will continue to hold them accountable. And she's willing to work with them, and moving forward, we want to see some changes from the EPA. In June, recently, the House of Representatives unanimously passed her amendment in the appropriations for the EPA to prioritize funding to develop a national strategy. She's also on the Subcommittee for Research and Technology, and they held a hearing recently with, I believe, the Plymouth Township Supervisor, and he spoke on, you know, the need for recycling programs in southeast Michigan, and how the, excuse me, there's been a big weight on local municipalities to cover the funding for this and find ways that are the most cost-effective for them. She also introduced a House Resolution 303. You can look that up online, but basically, it was just expressing a support for global remanufacturing. And remanufacturing is just the process by which products are returned to good, as new or better, from recycled products. And so she's really passionate about that, especially, she wrote an op-ed about it in a magazine recently, because she believes that is a pretty sustainable way to recycle old products, it's also cost-effective, and it's easy to be, it's easy to integrate into daily life, and it reduces carbon emissions and does a lot of good things. So with that all being said, we're definitely here to partner with you. We want to hear what you think about this and how we can take that back to DC and bring change on the federal, state, and local level.
Thank you, Hannah. So going back to the education, even the state has realized that there needs to be some education and has launched their education pieces, which you may or may not have seen on TV or on our social media page that we've been putting out there through municipal services. The other thing that the state is doing is they're looking at possible grants. There's five different types of grants that are out there and are available to communities by themselves and also collectively. And I had mentioned earlier that I invited Elizabeth from the state today, and she was unable to come, but we are going to get together. All of the deadlines for applying for grants in 2019 expired back in June or August, so we're looking at 2020 funding. So timing is good for the meeting that I will have with Elizabeth, and we will look at how we can better, how we can strategize those dollars into Canton Township. One of the opportunities is also going to be for communities to work collectively for some of these grants as well. Speaking with Jim, there's obviously, he mentioned some of the organizations, or some of the collaborations that are out there. We'll pick his brain and we'll look at what we can do. And I know Supervisor Williams, when your conference at Western Wayne was looking at something, we're following Washtenaw County very closely as well. And then what we're doing internally as an administration is working on creating an education calendar so that we can actually take some of this information and get it out there to the public to better educate them on how to recycle cleaner through various mediums that we have. You can see I've got them listed there. And obviously, that list is going to continue to grow, but we are putting something together that will actually be a calendar, show focuses of the month, when posts will go out. So we're going to strategize all of these messages across the actual calendar. And obviously, I will share that with you when that's actually solidified and we're ready to get the message out there. I did, actually, for those of you that have not seen it, I threw this in here. This is one of the state's commercials.
Glass bottles not emptied.
Yogurt containers with, ew! Cat food still in the can is bad, but oh, so good.
Hey, what are you doing?
Relax, ma'am, we're here to help.
Oh, this stuff could ruin the entire recycling load.
Wow, I had no idea.
Chill, we'll show you the ropes.
Michigan needs to recycle better, and that change starts with you. Learn the rules of recycling at recyclingraccoons.org.
So for those of you that have not seen that, that is the new raccoon family that is promoting recycling education in the state of Michigan. If you go to their site, there's a plethora of commercials and education pieces that you can view. There's all kinds of literature, there's a recycling 101 handbook. So when I say we're creating this calendar, this calendar is going to be focused around all these educational pieces that we can find from not only the state, but locally with our haulers and other partners, so that we can get information out there and hopefully right the wrongs. Everyone thinks they're doing a great job recycling, however, we see that there's contamination out there, and we need to fix that. So stay tuned for the calendar to come out. And I believe that that's all I have for the recycling efforts, recycling efforts and education. And as far as the presentation goes, that was very short, but I really just wanted to get some information out there and show that what, you know, what we're doing down at a local level is up here on the screen, but also recycling has the attention of people at the federal level as well and at the state level. So I wanted to kind of give you a baseline of where we're at, and then I think we can just roll right into questions unless there's any questions on any of the information that was presented in the last 20 minutes or so. No? Okay. So I did receive some questions, and I want to...
Actually, so we can ask a question about the presentation quickly, then?
Yeah, sure.
One of the items you listed was styrofoam, and I know that, you know, we say it's not recyclable, however, I know some of our residents do take the styrofoam out to Troy. So what is Troy doing differently where they accept styrofoam and we don't in this area?
Let me take a crack at that?
Sure.
Styrofoam is a little different. You know, you can't put it in the curbside, so it typically requires a drop-off facility. And SACRA, the authority in southeast Oakland County, has such a drop-off site in Troy. And at that site, you can take all kinds of materials, but one of the things you can take is styrofoam. And what they do when it is source-separated, and it's also, they have the ability to compact it there, and then it actually is shipped back to a facility that is able to reuse it as styrofoam feedstock. Ann Arbor also, at their drop-off facility, does a similar compacting of styrofoam. So typically, a drop-off capability is needed to make that possible.
I'm sorry, what did you say they do with it?
A drop-off facility. And what they do with it is they sell it back, a lot of times, Dart Corporation, which is based in Michigan and is a national, international manufacturer of styrofoam, they're able to actually buy these bales of compacted styrofoam and reuse them in new styrofoam.
Okay, thank you.
Just to add to that, Kristi Jones, the administrative assistant, is back here as well. She, we actually did look into styrofoam, because we know that's a big one that's contaminating the loads. We did look into a possible grant, because what you want to do is create a diversion center where those can be dropped off and go through exactly the process that Jim was talking about. Fortunately, we didn't qualify for the grant, but it is something that we could look at long-term to take that out of the recycling stream and actually dedicate another area for it, and that's something we could also do locally.
So like a drop-off area, like we do with maybe some of the hazardous waste, things like that?
Correct, yep.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Yes.
I'm sorry, who would administer that, the township?
We could, yes, absolutely. And then we could go through the process, and actually, I will forward a link, and I don't have it in front of me, but I did watch the process that occurred, because they have special machines that take, you know, large pieces of styrofoam. When it comes out, it's in a block about this big, and then companies like Dart do take that and recycle it and put that back into their operations. So I will find that video, and I will send that out to you. It's pretty interesting to look at the piece of machinery that they use. I mean, there's all kinds of machines out there, but one in particular that I saw, a demonstration of, I'll forward it to you.
Thank you.
Sure. We're looking at all options right now, yes. And the direction from the board.
Do you have any idea what the capital cost would be for the compacting machine? Anybody? You said you're talking about grants.
I don't.
For the styrofoam machine? Is that a chunk amount? That one in particular? There's varying levels, it depends on your volume, but it could be as low as 20 grand, could be as high as 45 grand, that kind of thing.
And is the resale good on that, when you compact it and sell it back?
Sell the styrofoam? Yeah, there's a sale price for it, right, yep.
So that could maybe pay for the machinery, then?
It will pay for some of the operating costs, but I think an underlying theme of all the recycling components is there are costs associated with it, and any revenue that's there will help offset those costs, but you have to think about it primarily as a cost center.
Yeah, you'd have to look at labor costs and hours and staffing as well.
And actually, just to, the drop-off concept is one that in some parts of the U.S., for example, the Carolinas, every major city and every county has a drop-off system of convenience centers that take film, they take reusable items, they take styrofoam, old mattresses, et cetera. So there's a lot of operating models about how, you know, how they can be developed, and that's something that easily could be pulled together. There's some technical assistance materials we can provide Jade around that, so. If I'm not mistaken, I believe Kroger also accepts...
And Myers.
Yeah, bad. Yep. Yeah, the grocery stores are part of the collection system nationwide, but they're only, they only do so much. Yep.
So if there's no more questions or comments on the presentation, obviously, that was, that's a lot of information to go through in 20 minutes to a half hour. Obviously, we've got some experts up here, and you can always email me some questions, and I can make sure I can find out the answers and get it back to you. But at this point, these are some of the questions that were received over the course of the last couple of weeks, and we'll just throw them out there. Or I guess at this point, I'll turn it over to the board to ask the questions, these came from the board, if that makes sense.
Yeah, the one question is recycling actually being recycled. What are you recycling? What are you actually taking? I mean, I know you don't take the plastic bags, but I know people, you know, put paper in there, they put cardboard in there, they put bottles in there, glass, brown glass, green glass. What exactly do you recycle?
Good evening. Joe Munam, I'm the Government Affairs Director for GFL. Yes, you are correct. We, all of the items that you mentioned are things that we accept, and for residents of Canton Township on their carts, there is a laminate list that is on the lid that includes all of the, what we would refer to as the Acceptables List, which, you know, tries to act as a guide, you know, right there in the resident's face of what they can and cannot dispose of. So yes, those are the things that we accept, which I think actually might be different than the question of what is actually marketable at this point. But we are picking that up. The presentation that we just heard is, you know, a very good presentation, because it addresses the major issues. When, in January of 2018, when China implemented their National Sword Program, it was very much like the stock market crash in the late 20s. It just sent the commodities markets haywire, and this is something that we really haven't recovered from. There are instances that we see where some markets, some commodities are improving, but generally, overall, there's been, it's not just in this area, but it's international, the problems with recycling. Some... area, but it's international, the problems with recycling. Some materials are more marketable than others. Corrugate, like cardboard, is very marketable. I believe newsprint is still that. I mean, part of the, the irony of that is fewer and fewer people are actually taking newspapers, so there's not as much of that available as there used to be. Metals, of course, are very desirable and marketable, and plastics 1 and 2 are very marketable. Now, mixed papers, not as much. And again, I heard of, you know, the term of China's plastic ban. China didn't ban plastic. China actually started a discussion that we should have had years ago in this country. China decided that they were going to take this extraordinarily high rate of contaminated material that they had previously been taken, which was over 20%, and they overnight decided to knock that down to half a percent rate of contamination. Well, because China will still take clean plastics, part of the problem that we confront in single-stream recycling is that much of the plastics that are put into the cart, say, you have your Tide bottle, which is good plastic to recycle, however, if it's not rinsed out and people left a little bit of that detergent in that bottle, and then it leaks over everything else that's in there, we've now contaminated a load of what otherwise would have been perfectly good recyclables. So, yes, there is the need, and, you know, I commend Eagle with their raccoon program to try to educate people on the need to have clean recyclables, because that's really more than half the battle for us. At GFL, we are one of, you know, first off, we're very proud to be a partner with the Canton community in hauling your waste, your recyclables, and your yard waste. And we have a full-time educator whose primary duty it is to go into schools in the metropolitan Detroit area and educate elementary school kids. I mean, she has gone into the higher grades, but predominantly it's K through 6. And teaching the kids about how to provide, not just to recycle, but how to recycle, because it's been our belief for many years that if you get to the kids and have them in the house, that they're likely going to hassle their parents to make sure that they're going to do recycling correctly. She averages in the metropolitan area, being in front of, on average, every year, about 22,000 kids, and that includes the Canton community. I was just elected to come here earlier today, so I didn't have time to actually put together what specific schools, but I did call and ask, "Have you been to Canton?" And she's like, "Well, the school year is young. I haven't been out there in the past few weeks," but yeah. So, and we are constantly going to communities and their cable outlets with newsletters that we provide, also with social media, to educate our customers of the best ways to recycle. So, I know that that's getting a little bit away from what your question was, but it's important to realize that we are taking all the things that you mentioned, that are on that Acceptables List. Finding markets for that, a lot of that stuff to be recycled is a lot more tricky.
So then what do you do with, I assume you sell it all, or do you have some that just sit there, or do you end up taking some to the landfill?
Stuff that's contaminated winds up at the landfill. I mean, we aren't, every hauler in the areas does exactly the same thing. Once it's contaminated, it would be the cost to decont, and first off, maybe you probably can't even decontaminate it, but the cost would be prohibitive. So, you know, there's materials that cannot be sold. I mean, we do our best to try to get rid of them, but I mean, you know, it's, if you, you'll see pictures on the news of docks on both, primarily on the West Coast, from Canada on down to Mexico, where it just, bales of stuff is almost to the sky of plastics that aren't going anywhere, because there's just simply no market for it, and some of that stuff will be disposed of.
The reason I'm asking these questions is because residents come to my window all the time, and they're buying more recycling bins, which is wonderful, but Canton residents are very, they want to make sure that they're recycling, and so a lot of people have two bins, some have three. And I give them the sheet, but I just want to make sure that, you know, all of the hard work they're doing, putting the plastic bottles, cleaning everything out, is definitely not going to the landfill. It's going to be recycled. That's my question.
It's interesting you talk about contamination, because I went over to the, we have, you know, a bunch of landfills here, and one of them over in Wayne is Waste Management. And I was there with work for, they took the sustainability team over there, we took a bus to the top, like we did as a team here a couple of years ago, and they had school kids taking buses to the top to see what it was like, and then they brought you into the recycling center. And they said something about, they said, like for peanut butter, it's hard to get out, and they said, "Don't use a lot of water, you're using another resource to clean something out." They said, "If you leave a little bit, it's okay." So I found that interesting, because they said they would take a little bit of debris. What is the difference between what they're saying and what you're saying in terms of we have to clean everything out? Why is that acceptable in some areas and not?
Evan, you're like them. Evan's our recycling general manager.
Hi.
Hi.
A lot of it has to do with the capability. So, like, what's actually quite fascinating and unique about the recycling industry is every end user is virtually different, and then the capabilities of the processors are different. It has to do with the years that they were built, it has to do with their acreage, their ability to expand, the size of their buildings, their funding, and so, a lot of it has to do with geography, a lot of it has to do with, like, the resources that are available to you that also aren't, you know, cost prohibitive. And so, what one, we'll use paper as an example, what one paper mill can tolerate, because they have a de-inking process, because they have a tumbler, because they have a unique setup that allows them to take in more contaminated material, and they're making, they're making a liner board, like a cereal box, the mill right next to them, right down the street, right, built within the same decade, right, cannot tolerate the same things, right? So, a great deal of what can and can't be done capabilities and so on and so forth have to do with where it's, you know, where it ends up, what the end user's doing with it, how the process is happening, and what their capabilities are. The, they had mentioned the acquisition of Canada Fibers, which is a Murph group in Ontario, but now also in Manitoba, and I believe it's Manitoba, right? Yeah, it's Manitoba. And so, anyway, long story short, it's the Disneyland of recycling. I've never, I just, I had the pleasure of going there and looking at their four stories of recycling, and with, you know, their capabilities are far and beyond anything I've ever seen before, but it took a lot of investment, it took a lot of time, it took a lot of, it took a lot of work, and it's taken a lot of equipment and people and resources and things like that. So, you know, they're able to take a very dirty stream and clean it, right? Clean it, clean it, clean it, clean it, clean it, clean it again, clean it again, clean it again, run it again, run it again, run it again. So, that has to, you know, that has to play into this pipeline that we create. So, where material, the origin of material, the ability to collect material, then the ability to transport that material, where it's being transported to, what their capabilities are, who do we have, what are they bound by, what are their boundaries, and then what are their capabilities? And then from that point, once it's in, it's been packaged into a material or a product, if you will, that can be sold to a market, who's buying that product, and what are their capabilities? What are they able to tolerate? What are they able to take in? And then from that point on, process it further into a marketable product. In the case of plastic, most of the time it's pelletized, right? It's pelletized back into something, and it might go from there to a colorant agent, or it might go from there to then just be turned back into a plastic product. So, there, that's the long answer. The short answer, there's a myriad of reasons why there might be, it's also the reason why there's a lot of confusion surrounding what can and cannot be done.
Just to say, clean everything then?
Yeah. That's the safest. I mean, like, clean is, clean is always preferred, you know.
Go ahead, Summer, I'm sorry.
Just piggybacking on Trezorus Levin's question, is there a way for you to tell us how much of recycling that residents are putting out is actually going to the landfill? I think I ask because as a board, we have an interest in extending the life of our landfill, not only environmental, but financial as well. So, do you have that data?
The short answer is no, because we take recycling, we are the largest waste hauler in metro Detroit, as you're aware. So, when we take the recycling from your curbside, we're also taking it from Plymouth Township, from Northville Township, from Livonia, from Redford Township, from Dearborn, from Dearborn Heights, I could go on at length. That goes to the same facility, it is then, you know, put on the floor and it's sorted. We don't, we aren't sorting all this material by community in order to know what the rates are for any one community. And I realize that that would be valuable data for an elected body to know how much more educational resources would be utilized to help improve those rates and lower contamination with your residents, but it's just something that we don't have that as, you know, on a community-by-community basis. However, and, I mean, we have some things going on right now that, and I just, we're a little frustrated, because when we came here tonight, there are some things that our company is going to do in this region that hasn't been absolutely finalized, so we can't discuss the specifics this evening, but if we came back in six to eight weeks, we could tell you it all. Suffice it to say, we're on the brink of making a very significant investment in recycling infrastructure in the metropolitan Detroit area, which our competitors simply aren't doing. And, you know, we also have the investment of a full-time employee that goes around and educates students about recycling. We take this seriously, but GFL, like every other company around, has been hit by the collapse of the recyclables market. So, but to answer your question, I, we can't break it out. The only way that that could be done is if we completely segregated your recyclables and then did essentially an audit, and that is a, that's an expensive proposition.
What about overall, for that, those communities?
We're in the process right now of formulating those reports, because they're, I think they're just wrapped up for the, what, yesterday, for this quarter, or this night, or reporting period to Eagle. So, I don't have those, but we will be making those reports to Eagle within the next month. So, I don't have the precise numbers overall, but the rate of contamination is high, and it's high everywhere.
If I could just add a little context here, that any of these recycling facilities, you'll be able eventually to see a report that says, "Here's our residue rate," and that residue is what ends up not going into a bail into a market, but instead goes, you know, to a landfill or disposal. And then typically, they'll be able to say, "Out of the remaining percentage, you know, this much was cardboard, this much was glass, et cetera." And that residue rate is something that is tracked in recycling facilities across the country, and some of them are as low as 10%, and some is as high as 25% or 30% or 35%. And that's a number that, you know, you'll probably get further information on here.
Are there items that make it into the residue rate merely because there is no market for that material now? Items that are on the list that are deemed recyclable, that if they were completely decontaminated and recycled by a resident of Canton or any other southeast Michigan community, is there an item that would not be recycled because there is no market? Is that happening right now?
I don't, I don't know specifically, but I know that this is a moving target. And so, what has been tried and true throughout many years of the single-stream program of recycling, because this type of environment has happened before, there is, the idea behind it is typically to stay the course, because where, as mentioned before, where there is sort of this catastrophic breakup, a global event, there becomes opportunity. And so, you never, you know, in my opinion, you never want to break the habits. You want to keep the proper habits going, you want to keep the people in motion, you want to keep, you want to keep the stream and the flow going, because, I'm not kidding you when I tell you this is a moving target. Biofuels are coming online faster than ever, you have new purposeful uses for what today we would, literally today we would call a contaminant tomorrow, you know, it's going to be all over the news, if someone has found a purpose for it, and they're identifying the streams and the origins and where it's coming from. But, you know, you know, in my, it's just my opinion, but, you know, we don't, we don't want to discourage what, you know, versus like, you know, a snapshot in time versus what the ultimate end goal is, which is the longevity of the landfills, the diversion from the landfills, the acceptance of material, the marketing of the material, and so on. So, you know, again, I can't speak to the specifics, but I can tell you that, in my opinion, it's always, it's always best to just like, stay the course, maintain the course, and...
So what you're saying is that if we're telling residents to put in plastics numbers 1 through 7 today, what I heard is potentially only 1 and 2 are really being recycled today, but in the future, they may be recycled, so keep putting them in there, and then hopefully we'll be recycling 5, 6, and 7 at some point.
And I'd like, I'd like to add that there are recycling facilities in southeast Michigan that can do all those materials, and then there are others that can't. So, it really depends what tipping floor it goes to, what that equipment looks like, like was said earlier, and how efficiently it's operating. You know, there are variables here, for example, when the material is wet, it's been raining, you'll see the efficiency decrease, and in the residue will be some materials that, when it's dry, would have ended up in the right bail. So, it's a moving target, changes day to day, but it also changes facility to facility, and that's really the key, you know, key parameter for success, is you've got to have a good facility relationship. And I think that's what sort of, I think that's what you guys are implying, is you're out there looking for that right facility, and you can't tell us.
We certainly would like to sell every last bit of it.
Right.
You will notice from your neighbor next door in Westland that they have, they're in a different position than you are in how they were handling recycling, but they started to take their recycling to the landfill, because they could no longer afford to process it at a Murph. The price had just become too much for them. However, there, I believe they're still collecting that separately. And why are they doing that? Because they're keeping Westland residents in the habit of keeping separate recycling and to continue to recycling, because there have been studies where recycling has stopped, that it takes, and then they try to start it up again. It could take almost a decade for the residents in the community to get back online with that. It could take almost a decade for the residents in a community to get back online with that. And Mayor Wild did not want to take that chance of losing the habit of being in recycling. It's better to keep people recycling and educate them along the way of improving the habits of recycling. You know, we were talking about plastic bags earlier. I know the individual over there was speaking about that. I mean, on some of our old acceptables list, we had that we would take plastic bags, except the MRFs, the MRFs will call them, they're cancer. And because when they go down the line, these blowers, they blow up in the air, then blow up into the conveyor belt and shuts it down. So when we were doing this a while ago, we were taking those bags. Now we don't. I mean, and that's, and you look at Meyer and Kroger, if they do this separately, then they, and it's clean, then they can recycle that.
But I think it's been over a year that that's been the case, and we haven't reeducated our citizens, our residents. And that's very disturbing that we're getting contamination by these plastic bags and it's hurting other recycling. And we haven't done a concerted effort yet to reeducate.
That's right. And we missed the window on the grants this year, which is very dismaying.
Well, can I just briefly, I wanted to, I am aware of what happened in Westland and the kind of, I understand the philosophy and it is, you know, we're all here today because we appreciate recycling. And I don't want, I would never want to see anything that would hinder our ability to recycle in the future. And as long as residents in Westland are aware that while they are still separating their recyclables, they're going to the landfill, I'm okay with that because, you know, we kind of have a duty, one, to ensure we are recycling if we're saying we're recycling, but then, two, we have like a duty of transparency, right, as a government, you know, those are those kind of two fundamental philosophies there. We want people to stay in the habit of recycling and recycling materials, but we also owe them, to some degree, the transparency of knowing whether or not they are participating in a fool's errand. If they are, if they think something is being recycled and it's not, that's my concern is just that, you know. And then additionally, if there are facilities that could recycle that material and it's going to cost a little bit more, the question then is, do you then call the question with the residents and say, is that something of value to you? Because while you're running a business, we are, in a sense, trying to provide, to some extent, a public good. You know, it's nice that recycling has made money in the past. It's nice that sometimes, under good market conditions, it can make money, it can make lots of people money. But some people would argue that it is worth spending money to recycle, having it be a cost center because of the environmental concerns, you know. I can tell you this, if I knew certain materials I was buying, I would, even if I recycled it, the container wasn't going to be recycled, I might change my products that I'm buying. You know, that would alter my behavior. And those are things, I think, discussions you can only really have if you're having an open and kind of transparent conversation about the state of what it means for Canton residents, recycling for them. That's my only comment.
I think the question is also still on the floor. I mean, you guys had, we know that you used to use Republic as an MRF. From what I understand, you don't anymore. You're using your own wherever you can find it. But, so we know you take one and twos now. What are happening to the rest of the items? You're just piling them up, like you said, or are they going to the landfill?
Well, again, if we're looking at the material that isn't just contaminated right off the bat, the residue, because I guarantee you, all of that is going to a landfill. And we've been transparent about that. And, you know, as Jim pointed out, we have an obligation to report, you know, at our facilities, what, you know, to the state of Michigan, what we're doing. But in terms of materials such that we absolutely can't sell, I'm not going to tell you that some of that hasn't wound up in a landfill. I mean, and I agree, it's a public good to recycle, but if absolutely nobody will buy this material, it's not being recycled. And, you know, it comes down to the point of what are you going to do with it? Something that we frequently bring up as being a problem is glass. Is glass 100% recyclable? Sure. Except that in this market, and I don't know, maybe in other markets, it makes more sense to recycle it, but here, there isn't really much of a market for glass. And I've been doing, I've been involved in recycling back in the late 80s. I was the founding member of my community's solid waste management commission, and glass recycling was an issue then. And it remains one now. It's also, we have all sorts of problems with glass because when people put it into a single-stream truck, you know, the first thing, they tip it over there and it breaks. It's not our favorite thing to take, though we understand that it's recyclable. It's just, when there are materials that, there's nothing you can do with it, it just, we don't have endless space to keep these materials. But as Evan pointed out, it is a moving target. What has no market today may tomorrow be very marketable. So, you know, it's, we're not rushing to do any of this stuff. In fact, we didn't come, I mean, it's one of your questions, when was the township notified that there was an issue? I think it was before Christmas last year. It was in early December. And that was almost a year after China had implemented the National Sword Program. So we really tried to carry this along as long as we could without telling everybody, hey, it's a big problem, because we thought, hey, this too may pass. They may change their position. They haven't.
So if you look at the overall load that you get from all of the communities, is there a way for you to, just not even an exact number to ballpark what's being rejected because of contamination and what's being rejected because there's no market for it?
We, we will have those figures for you because, again, yesterday, I believe, was the cutoff for our reporting to the, to Eagle for exactly what we're doing in that regard. And we'll provide that to you, but we haven't finished and made the report yet.
Thank you.
But yes, we will provide that.
Thanks.
I just want to say that I think we're all on the same side here. I think everybody wants to recycle in this room, and I can appreciate the different forces that you're up against. I just want to make sure that we're educating the community in the proper way. And if the education is that some things may not get recycled at certain times because of market forces, we need to sort of start being honest and open about that to the community. And that doesn't mean you shouldn't put stuff into recycling, and it doesn't mean that it's always going to be recycled, but it will be based on these different factors. But the one thing I wanted to ask was, there's a lot of misconception about contamination. Jade, you showed the different pictures of contamination. If something, if someone's individual home's barrel is contaminated in different ways, that gets put into a truck, does that contaminate the whole truck? Now, I'm imagining like a piece of wood will not contaminate an entire truck, right? Or unless it...
No, a piece of wood is not going to contaminate the entire truck.
Or even that person's barrel and the things that are in it. It's not affecting that plastic milk bottle or whatever, right?
Typically, no, but the eighth of a jug of tide dripping over will contaminate their neighbors' perfectly clean recyclables.
Yes. So if that's mixed together in the truck, then to what extent the actual detergent falls on other pieces of plastics or glass or whatever, it can contaminate other things. So there's different levels of contamination.
I think it's also important to know that, being in the Midwest, having our Canadian partners, we, a lot of recovered material from this region goes back into food packaging, right? Goes into cereal boxes, goes back into food-grade cardboard and different things like that. So a major, 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 major concern, a virtual zero tolerance for food contamination waste. So that's, you know, just back of the head.
Right.
So that's a, that's a, that's a big one that comes...
I think we just need to educate better on how to clean the materials and what it means to be contaminated. I'd also like Congresswoman Stevens to take a look at the fact that the things that aren't being recyclable, recycled because there's not a market, perhaps the manufacturers of those materials should be paying for the recycling in some way. And I know there's probably five different ways to do that, and there'll be arguments and debate over that for, all the way up to the Senate and the House. But it's something, you know, if five, plastics five, six, and seven, whoever is making those knows, if those are not being recycled as much as numbers one and two, there should be a surcharge on using those by manufacturers or packagers or whatever. So I'm not an expert in this field, but I just would like to send that message back.
Well, you're right. And I want to get back to a point that you're making previously about transparency. I'm not being evasive. I don't want to give you numbers that I don't actually have yet because we're in the process of formulating them. But I too have worked in local government for a good part of my life. In fact, I used to be a deputy clerk, so, you know, I know everything that goes on in those offices. It's a lot of fun. Transparency is very important. I mean, I think many of us of a certain age remember way back in the 70s when the lottery came on board and it was supposed to go for education, and it became apparent that the legislature wasn't using all that money for education or putting it in general fund. Okay, well, for many, many, many years, that money is now exclusively locked in to the educational stream. It's not being used on other things. However, that, the fact that the public was being misled at that point, it's now decades later, and there are still people who are unconvinced that it's all going to education. So we agree with you. Making sure that people understand what's going on with this is very important, and we want to, we want to make sure that we provide that transparency to all of our partners and make sure that we get it right.
To that end, I'd like to go a few places very quickly. We've been asking questions for nine months through Conference of Western Wayne repeatedly. Document for us what does and what you do want in the bin, what you don't want in the bin, and we will effectively communicate to the residents and educate them. However, you did, you introduced a new twist that I've never heard until this evening, and that is, keep putting it all in there because we're hoping and praying that the markets may come, which is, okay, I'm not, that's not a negative to me, because the markets may be developed. I know that the biofuels is a big deal with the five-through-seven plastics, or three-through-seven plastics melt to turn into fuel. That's out there and it's being developed. Glass manufacturers, we don't have one in the region, so it costs more to truck it, right, than buying new sand. So I understand why the glass is being thrown away. So do we see a future where, and this is where the transparency is critical on your part, and you say in a few weeks you'll be able to share more than you can tonight, but do you see a future where there will be a market for styrofoam in our south, in Canton area, in our region, Conference of Western Wayne? Do you see a future where there's a potential for marketing the glass? Do you see a future where there's a potential for three-through-seven plastics? Because if there's no future potential in any of the mapping that you've laying out, why the hell are we wasting money putting it in the bin so you guys could pay somebody labor to take it out to take to the landfill? That makes no sense.
Well, we have had this discussion previously about the acceptables list and revisions to it, and it's been frustrating for us when we've been asked that we don't have an answer for you. And it's because, you know, myself and Sam, when we've talked with you and some of your fellow supervisors, yeah, that we just don't have that answer. However, we are at a position, and I mean, this could happen any day. I thought it was going to happen a couple of weeks ago, but that we are, we're going to make a real step in the whole metropolitan area in upping the game in recycling. And that, at that point, we'll be able to tell you either that we're going to change the acceptables list and work with our communities to inform of this, or just say, no, we're going to keep, keep on going. We are, we are, like I said, we'd love to come back in the next month and a half or so and tell you a lot of the things that we either don't have answers for tonight or, you know, you'll know what our announcement is shortly in terms of what we're going to do in this region.
So I guess let's put a placeholder in for early in January to have another study session, invite you all back, which should be enough time, right? Give you three months.
Yes.
So let's plan on doing that.
I have one thing I wanted to talk about with Congresswoman Stevens' office. You know, I would definitely potentially, potentially look at, looking at the tax code, federal tax code as a way to incentivize creating a market for recycled material. Especially nowadays, I look at the constant generation of new products, which is essentially the generation of new waste at a time when we can't even handle the waste that we currently have. You know, we use, have used the tax code to incentivize lots of behavior, good or bad, for the last, I don't know, 100 years that we've had a federal income tax. There's essentially, you know, a substantial amount of credits that companies could be granted for using those kind of materials that might reduce the cost of those materials below that of fresh raw materials. So that would be something I think would be worth looking into. Or credits for the capital acquisitions of machinery that might create more efficient recycling facilities. Additionally, maybe putting some federal standards on what would qualify to be considered a MRF. How much, what's the minimal level of service you would want to require to have? And that could also be a state thing as well.
Yes, I could just quickly comment that you're in an area where there is some discussion. Colorado, for example, passed a tax credit somewhat along the lines you've talked about. And then there's been some discussion at the federal level of accelerated depreciation of investment in MRF equipment. So I think you're right in asking at the federal level what can be done. So you're absolutely right.
I mean, we've got a national crisis. We decided to put all our eggs in one basket, which is never smart, and what happened is what happened, which is probably, I hate to say it, but not that surprising.
A wake-up call, source.
Yeah.
If we actually used baskets for our eggs, we wouldn't have this issue.
Maybe bins would be a better, a better metaphor.
If we had five bins, one for, you know, one and two plastic, one for paper cardboard, one for glass, it'd be a lot simpler, one for styrofoam.
I mean, the points that, the points that have been brought up, the one about the manufacturer having responsibility for the end of life, that is a tried and true method. That's, many, many European countries do it this way. They do not dedicate land to landfills. They dedicate land to vineyards, which is very close to my heart because I love wine. No, and truthfully, if you look at packaging in these countries, it's so intelligently, so much goes into R and D upfront so that the recovery is simple. It's super, the recovery, the processing, every step of the way is so efficient, right, all the way through, that it, once again, it stimulates, you know, it honestly, from origin forward, it creates a market, it creates a market unto itself. And if you, and if you don't do that, you pay such an outrageous, you know, tax upfront because you're responsible for what you're putting out there. That's great. And in addition to that, where you see communities that have incredible recovery rates in their single-stream recycling or whatever recycling product, there is funding coming in from some municipal, federal, state, you know, province, whatever it might be, and, you know, getting out there and, you know, tapping into those funds. And, you know, you see a lot of recycling symbols on a lot of different items, and sure... And it, and sure, in the right conditions, they're recyclable, right? But, there's a whole lot that goes into that. Everything from manufacturer to, to recovery, right? And then, from recovery to processing and processing forward. So, it can be done, you know? It, it's absolutely possible. It just needs to be done. And, and, and this ebb and flow, you're, you're seeing a delayed response globally, especially in North America. You're seeing a delayed response because North America was trying to call China's bluff, and they weren't bluffing. About thirty years ago, they did something very, very similar with the steel market, right? So, they were the largest importer of steel across the world. You had all these investments from all around Europe moving closer and closer and closer to China for recovered steel. And they kind of put the word out there. At some point, they were going to stop importing so much steel, that they were going to start recovering it from within their own country. They weren't going to need all this. And the, the steel market crashed because they didn't believe them. They, they tried to call their bluff. They, they thought that there was no way that China could build the infrastructure to recover their own materials and to process it the way that they needed to build the expanding infrastructure that they had, and they did it. So, you know, shame on us, right, for, for, for putting all our eggs in a basket and being there. But, but it's, you know, it took us a long time to get in the situation that we're in, and it's going to take us a while to figure it out. But luckily, there is a lot of opportunity. And because of the declined value, right? Because of the declined value in the products that are being produced today, that then breeds opportunity. So, now, they've gone below a threshold in many cases where people are starting to look at them. Urban mining, so to speak. They're starting to look at them as, okay, now they're so cheap, now what can we do? You know, versus before, when there was a competitive market and, and the market was purchasing them overseas, it didn't make any sense. They could get so close to virgin product, you know, for a comparable amount of money, that it didn't make any sense to even put any attention into it, right? But now that the products are so cheap, and then sometimes, in some cases, they can take them at a charge, that now there, now there's a lot of interest in, I mean, weekly, we're hearing whispers of new things coming online in, in North America.
Along those lines, I was at the CWW meeting, and I think, Jim, you were there. And there was talk of putting a facility here. Do you remember that?
Exactly.
And can you talk a little bit about that, please?
Yeah, that, that's, we were talking before the meeting about some of the developments in the area. And, you know, you certainly have talked about some of your potential moves. And I mentioned earlier that the, that Pratt Industries has been talking to a wide variety of groups about the need for more recycling capacity. And even today, some interviews were being held to start up the City of Detroit MRF, I'm sorry, City of Ann Arbor MRF. Sorry about that. And there are some link-ins. There's sort of a little, you know, domino effect that when certain decisions get made, that will open up other opportunities. And one of the opportunities I think will be, that will be opened up is some interest in your site, you know, that's been talked about, the sixteen acres, I think.
A mill in front of the land.
Yep. And, and the fact that there, there potentially are, there, there's what is known as hub and spoke in the world of recycling, where you have a major MRF that can, you know, it's, what did you call it? The Disneyland of Murfs earlier?
Unbelievable. Yeah, ridiculous.
Yeah, that, you know, you don't, don't want to build twenty of those in Michigan, but maybe Michigan needs three. And then, smaller Murfs that receive the material maybe remove some of the material, like the paper, and then send the rest to these other Murfs. And that's part of what might be possible here for you locally that would benefit certainly the whole CWW region. And I see that as very real. Jade mentioned the Eagle Grant Program. And we're actually in negotiations with the state to provide some technical assistance to develop this recycling, you know, this expanded and more capable recycling infrastructure in Michigan. And I'll, I think both GFL's plans, as well as what you potentially could do here, are sort of on the checklist of possible that could receive grant support. There's a lot of industry partnerships nationwide that want to see better Murfs in Michigan, let alone Pratt, as we talked about earlier, as well as other markets. And so, that's something that definitely deserves further attention and could be part of the discussion at your January reconvening. Who at the state would be overseeing the creation of a hub and spoke? Or would we rely on the individual private-owned Murfs to kind of organize themselves into a hub and spoke and just hope that it works? You have to, you have to rely on business relationships, which can include public engagement. You know, there's been, I understand, some interest in the Washtenaw County Authority that's been talked about. And we also talked about SACRA and Rosok, where they essentially took public sector responsibility to cause a quality recycling operation, a MRF, to be developed. However, even in all those, how they work together in these hub and spoke arrangements is really something that happens on a kind of almost a business, a relationship approach. And all the state will be trying to do is essentially incent good investment and good decision-making by private companies, by public companies, by paper companies. And, and literally, we've done, part of our job is to do the math. The state wants to triple the recycling rate, and it's just like any other business. If you want to put the throughput, you know, at three X, then you got to build more capacity. And that's really the opportunity in front. And, and I would say to the point being made earlier about you can't turn the citizen off and on, you know, on a daily basis. And so, the argument could be made that what needs to happen right now is fix the infrastructure and the business relationships, and, and then come in with that strong, you know, education outreach program. In the meantime, just one last thing, there are some simple messaging, like, don't put the plastic bags in there. Don't put the rubber hose in there. You know, don't put the bowling ball in there. Don't put the two-by-four in there. Those are the messages that are real easy right now.
I think we had some audience. I didn't know if we were, how we were doing that, Pat?
Maybe now would be a good time to let, public comment. And then, maybe fi- finish up with board questions, if there's any final board questions. So, at this point, is there anybody here that would like to speak on this topic this evening, the recycling topic? Go ahead, Mr. Miller. Yeah, the podiums are still there. Yeah, please. Are the podiums there?
Is the mic on?
I don't know if there's a mic there or not. Do we have a mic out there? Yeah, there's a mic there.
The gentleman is talking about the NRF or whatever it is. What's it consist of? Because we've had the City of Detroit years ago try to put compost here. And over there in Washtenaw County, it's nothing but a stinkhole. They're having trouble right now, and they can't control it with three-hundred-thousand-dollar homes. I've talked to the state rep. That's privately and, and government-controlled. They're not doing a very good job, if that's going to be part of it. Now, the next thing is this stuff around Eight Mile, I've known this years ago, and Grand River area. Some of these waste outfits have a big yard. They bring it in, and they dump it from all over the state and all over the country. So, why should we take on, we have landfills here, tons of them. And no, really, there's been a workup. On their two-hundred-and-fifty acres over there, it would be cheaper to have houses on. They're paying five-thousand dollars a year taxes in what they get on revenue for that dump.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Is there any additional public comment? Hacina?
Yeah.
Yeah, please. And we'd ask that you share your name, address, which is not required, but we ask you to. And then, also limit any comments to three minutes.
My name is Hacina. I live here in Canton, Kensington Drive. I had a question. I know you talked about composting, but I was, are we even looking into a Canton citywide composting opportunity or facility here? Is that, is that, are you going to talk about it later or?
At this point, is, is comment, but go ahead and ask questions, and then we'll try to include a response to your questions in, in the discussion that follows.
And the education part, I know you mentioned somebody goes to schools, right? And I know you still have new education opportunities. But, as of today, if I want somebody to come educate my people in my community center, adults, is there anything available for, because I called once, and they said they're going to call me back, and I never heard from them. Because I know sometimes, you know, you have it in the newsletter, you have, but not everyone looks at it. And sometimes, like a live demo of what's allowed might, might be even better. Oh, thank you. Thank you. Can I have another question or?
Yeah, go ahead.
The, is this related to, because I missed the beginning, I'm sorry. So, if it's not, do, what about recycling with, in Canton apartments and businesses that I don't think all of them have the recycling bins available? Is that something we will consider? And are we going to talk about reducing? Like, are we going, is there any incentive for businesses not to use styrofoam? Coffee stores not to use styrofoam cups, not using plastic bags? Is there anything that we can do as a community to, to stop using disposable products?
Thank you. Is there any additional public comment? Any additional public comment? Okay, please.
Lenny Lukinoff, I live in Brookfield, sort of around the corner from where you're proposing potentially to put a rec- MRF, a recycling center. He said off of Michigan Avenue. I'm at Palmer and Sheldon. We already have enough traffic on there. The landfill doesn't bring their trucks through there. I don't want to see recycling trucks through there. They're the same as, as trash trucks coming through there. We're, it's already coming home. It's already congested. I don't, I don't want to see more there. Find a different location for that, where it's not going to be right there along Michigan Avenue. We already have the landfill. Let's spread the wealth and the joy of this recycling. I'm all for recycling, don't get me wrong, but let's spread the wealth here in Canton. Just don't leave it off of Michigan Avenue here for us that live that close by these facilities. The second thing is, and I, and I apologize, I just got off work, so I missed the first part of this, is, look, if the recycling isn't going to the recycling centers, or if it's going to recycling centers and it's just going to a landfill from there, maybe we need to talk about what we're actually recycling here in Canton. Because I don't want to waste my time cleaning my plastic so it's nice and clean in order to go to a landfill. You know, that's water, that's time on my part. So, if, if only we could recycle right now, is, you know, plastics one and two? And forget the glass, for my understanding, because it pays, you know, that's no market right now for them. Let's not do the glass. But, don't, don't put the wool over my eyes and say, yes, it's being recycled. Pitch in, well, I'm cleaning the gravy out of the jars and stuff like that. Don't waste my time. Be honest with me. And, and if we could get the market and we go back, that's wonderful. Then, we could start doing that. But, you know, we help, you know, reduce what we can do for that. Instead of making me think it's going to a recycling center and it's not being recycled because of the contamination may be one, but the markets aren't there right now. Until we get markets, let's, let's, let's be sensible about what we recycle with that. And the other one, and I know it's not a question, but I, I don't see it on here, is that, and we pay more for it being recycled. So, since it's, since not all of it's being recycled, is there a reduction for our payments? So, my taxes will be a little lower in that part with the waste part of it? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional public comment? Any additional public comment? Okay, thank you. I guess panel, if you would kind of, anybody want to jump in with any responses? There are a lot of questions in there. Or Jade, maybe we can compile those for the next get-go round. But, the, I don't know, is there anybody who would like to respond to anything that was said or asked? In terms of education going out to adult communities, is that something we can do?
We do that, too.
Wonderful.
And really, it's just, and I'm sorry if you contacted us and nobody got back with you. If anybody has a community group, a senior group, libraries, the, our educator is eager to go out and make sure that those, that, that, that we are sharing that knowledge in the community. So, by all means, contact me, and I'm happy to provide my contact information. Anybody put on your website, I'm happy to make sure that we accommodate any request for that. Composting, actually, I do more with composting than, than these other guys here. I mean, I can go, I, I wasn't really ready, I didn't think you guys were interested in that, but we could go on about that at, at length. And that's something where there needs to be, as the state now is looking at making changes or updates to Public Act 451, Part 115, which affects solid waste plans and everything else, mainly on a county level, composting is going to have to be addressed because currently, as I'm sure you're all well aware, it's against the law to have composting in landfills. Now, there are, there's a landfill up in St. Clair County, Smith's Creek, where they'd love to take yard waste because they have what's called a biogenerator. And the quick decomposition of that would help fuel that biogenerator, but the state won't let them. So, that's something else where, and again, it's getting harder and harder. As the gentleman first pointed out about the odor, we have one of the largest commercial compost facilities in the state of Michigan. But, making sure that we are mitigating any odors so we're not impacting our neighbors is a daily struggle. Because this is organic material that's decomposing. There are ways to get around it. But, to say that we'll always make sure that there's not a single odor is just, you know, nobody can say that. However, compost is something that's very recyclable and has a use. I mean, there is a market for compost, and we're happy to, to meet that, those needs. But, yes, we do pick up your yard waste, and I don't, I just, Mr. Dinsky was just pointing out to me, I don't believe that, that goes to our facility in LaPierre.
We actually pay a premium to go outside, I believe.
Ypsilanti Township, right. So, in fact, our facility in LaPierre isn't sufficient in size to take all the composting that, or yard waste that we take in. But, again, if the legislature is going to continually say you can't put this in a landfill, then they're going to have to address the need to have facilities to process this. It's, it really is sort of an either-or proposition. And I think, was, were there any other questions I'm?
Jade, if you could, please, make a note. In terms of our communication plan, Hacina did bring up a good point about reaching out to the business community, because I think most of our communication pieces are focused on residents. And there is that whole section, subsection.
We, and we have a whole commercial division for recycling in South Beach, Michigan. We, we service Canton, and I, I run a, most of the team that I run, actually, we, we go in and develop, start-to-finish programs for either existing businesses or businesses that come online.
Yeah, because I'd be very interested in seeing some statistics in terms of the accounts that you have in Canton. You probably know how many commercial properties there are. You probably know what percentage of market you own. And then, if you could help us understand what that looks like.
Yeah, yeah.
See how we can participate.
Businesses are highly motivated. They generate, they generate a lot of waste, right, in, in general, for, for what they do. But, they're also like, you know, it's because it's, because they have the ability to structure themselves in a way. The capture rate, when done correctly, can be very, very high, very rewarding, very, you know, and a very economic choice for, for the business. And, and even in troubled markets like this, where it's kind of flipped, you know, it's like the stock market. Sometimes it's up, sometimes it's down, but overall, they benefit. And, and there's also just a lot of focus from, from large companies, Fortune 500, Fortune 1,000 companies to be involved and to be responsible for the waste that they're.
What I'd like to do is circle back and have just a follow-up meeting, just with the, talking about the business side.
Perfect. Pat, if I can just butt in just for one second, just to build on what he's saying. There's a real difference between residential recycling and commercial recycling. The commercial recycling we get is source-separated. It's not all going into one pile. The businesses are separating this directly, so the employees have a pile for cardboard.
Multiple stream.
It, it is.
Yeah, it's like old school.
And so, the contamination rates are much, much lower.
Unless you're talking about styrofoam or something that has had food on it, right?
That's correct. Styrofoam, large, large, large generators of styrofoam will have typically a Styrofoam, large, large, large generators of styrofoam will have typically a densifier onsite, or will work with a group that, that has a densifier, and they'll, they'll, furniture companies, for example, large-scale furniture companies, they, they generate a tremendous amount of styrofoam, and they'll have, and they also generate a tremendous amount of cardboard. So they'll have an area in their shipping, receiving warehouse that will be specifically for styrofoam, and typically, they'll, they're, they're very motivated to, they're very motivated to densify it themselves. Polystyrene is like one of the, the miracle plastics of the, of the, you know, of the several last, several hundred years. The, the unique properties about it is that it's a very long polymer chain that, through this process in making styrofoam, becomes incredibly durable, incredibly light, almost as light as air. Like, the composition of it is like so close to air, it's hilarious. That makes it a great agent for packaging and doing different things. The downside of that is that it makes it very, very, very difficult to travel, right? So on the, on the one side, what makes polystyrene so wonderful is that you can, you're reducing the weight, right, of the packaging that you're traveling. So what's in the package is what you care about, you want to protect it, but you don't want to pay more in freight, you don't want more carbon footprint, the whole thing. So you want a very, very light product that will protect it throughout its journey. Now, you have this product that you need heavy, right? Because we, in, in order to make it economic for the entire process of recovering it, we want heavy. We want heavy, heavy, heavy. We want consolidated, we want clean, and we want heavy, right? So it would take them trailers upon trailers upon trailers, even of the compacted polystyrene in most cases, so they get into using the, the densifiers, which, I mean, I think, Jim, do you know if it's, do you know the ratio of the densifier?
I, I don't.
It's like ten to one.
High density, yeah.
Yeah, it's very, very, extremely high. So it creates a block, it creates a, it creates a very, very heavy, very dense block of very clean, very, very clean material that can be packaged into, up on a pallet, on a skid, and it becomes very heavy again. So it starts out very light and then becomes very heavy again. So, so, and like I said, we help with that all across, really all across North America.
Jim, please.
Yeah, I wanted to bring up two things that were brought up by your, your citizens. One is that, as Joe said, this Part 115 law is being essentially reviewed and possible amendment may be introduced. I sit on the advisory committee for that, and one of the outcomes to the concerns that were voiced about compost facilities is that a very rigorous, essentially regulatory framework is being improved for compost facilities that might eliminate some of the, some of the bad actors out there that we all know about and have been a problem in the past. Secondly, somebody mentioned apartments and condos and multifamily mobile homes and businesses, and one of the things that you have as an asset is you have a contract with, with a partner, GFL in this case, to service your, your curbside routes. That same contracting process, we're actually helping communities in, in Oakland County, communities like Orient Township, Rochester, Rochester Hills, who have actually, in their request for proposals, included pricing for condos, recycling both trash, multifamily, mobile home communities, and even business communities, especially in some of the more dense areas. So you have some tools that can be used that are actually working already in South, Southeast Michigan and have helped bring recycling to a lot of these programs, or a lot of these communities.
Any other comments based on citizens' comments? The, Jade, I'm sorry.
No, just, as you talk about compost, I remind folks, Ann Arbor's had a pretty good compost program for a while. I don't work there anymore, but I'm sure they would give you a tour if Jade made a call. That's 29 acres. They're fortunate, it's in the middle of an old 400-acre landfill site, so there's really not odors, but they've gotten to the point where all food scraps, pre-consumer, post-consumer, you have a turkey carcass, you can put it in your compost bin. And they're not having any issues. So it's worth taking a look if you want to evaluate that, but they've been able to do it well. And that's also a good example of a public-private partnership. And I believe that same partner is now going to start working with Grand Rapids. So Ann Arbor's not the only place looking at this and kind of doing it in a public-private way.
Jade, any final comments before we have final board questions, if there are any?
No, just that I appreciate everybody that was here tonight and the panel that we actually put together, because I think there's a lot of good information, a lot of education right here in this room, and that in my short tenure here, I think we've got a lot of work to do, and I'm going to be looking towards these partners to my left and to my right to make sure that we put together the best plan that we can for the township, and, and put that plan together and work with, with you as a board to implement and hopefully approve any sort of recycling policy or plan, or any changes that we may have in the future. So, other than that, that's, I just want to thank everybody for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Final questions, comments?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. Thank you for pulling this together, Jade. As you said, you're new, and you had to scramble and figure out what's going on and pull everybody together. As we also spoke about, Clerk Steg was talked about how we have to be careful with filling our landfills, and that's why recycling is important, and that's why it's important for our residents to know what to put in. What dismays me is that we've been asking for this study session since December, and it's, it moved to March, and then it moved to June, and then August, and here we are in October, and we've lost a whole year of educating our residents, and we, you know, bypassed the grant, so let's not do that again. I mean, we have to make sure that we understand what can go in there. I don't know what the magic number is, but I read 10 studies today that demonstrated that educating residents about garbage usage as well as recycling, what you can, can't put in, how you don't, can't contaminate, like the raccoon showed. I mean, research shows that people need to hear a message at least seven times before they internalize it. And that's why we need to get these grants, and we need to educate residents at the libraries, at the community centers, and that's really important. So whether it, we look at what the list is now, whether we look at one of the residents talked about, if we're not recycling five through seven, do we pull that out? Or is there a magic formula where we don't want to do that because in six months, we might want five to seven? Like you said, Westland continues. So we have to understand that. We have to have, you know, a solid answer on what we're going to do with that. So we really do need a solid plan to educate the residents to get ready for those grants for next year, including cable TV spots, which I believe we can start, continue doing now. We're putting, I think, the raccoons on our cable spot, so we should continue with that. We have to continually update us, and so please keep talking to us. I mean, there was a hesitation, and I understand that, but there was a hesitation where you wanted to not quite say that it was going to the landfill, but we know that they are. And you can't tell us how much you're saying, however, it's important that we know what is going to the landfill and what isn't, and that you keep us updated. That's important. Transparency is important. And we need to look at what we do moving forward if local markets aren't created. Also, this new facility that CWW is talking about, I mean, I hope that we do bring things here, whether it's, you know, we find a place for it. And this also has to happen sooner than later. So I don't know how often we can meet on this. I mean, do we do it monthly? How do we pass out information?
Coming back in January, right now. We're coming back in January.
In January?
Yeah.
Are there going to be updates before that in terms of, would you know anything? You said six weeks. You're going to know, there's going to be a big announcement by GFL.
I was sort of hoping it would be before I got here tonight.
So if there's a publicity release, yes, we'll be sharing it.
Okay. Okay, but as a township, you know, we even have to have our plans in place, ready to kick off and keep going. All right, thank you.
Pat, how much longer do we have with this salt trail before it's filled up roughly?
Last time, we originally started talking about that, that question, Steve, is 17, 17 years? I don't know if you remember. And then, year over year, it keeps getting shorter and shorter. So some number between 11 and 17. I don't know exactly if Republic's sharing with you a guesstimate, because I've talked to different members of their leadership team, and not, no one's consistent.
Which changes almost every other week on their leadership team.
Also, yes.
When I sold my company to GFL in 2015, I was told 25. So now it's 17 to 11. Last time I asked him, it was 15, and that was about six months ago.
Yeah, so it's, it's a moving target, but if we're not, if we're recycling less, we know it's getting shorter.
Yeah. So it's important that the township do all we can to reduce that tonnage that we're sending down to you and certainly recycling it. Recycling is a two-edged, I was going to say two-edged sword, but two-edged for both, it helps the Canton Township to reduce what we're dumping into, into salt trail, but also it's a moneymaker for you guys. Do you see any, any problem with, is it going to go away? I mean, if, if China's not receiving, the commodity market is up and down, worse than the stock market sometimes, is it going to go away? Is recycling going to end? If it's not profitable, is nobody going to touch it? Is that right?
Well, let me, let me jump in first, and then to you guys, operator, one of the pivots that's happening right now is everybody's realizing that the revenue stream, not only does it fluctuate, but it's not enough to cover the operating costs of the recycling facility or the collection program. And so I forget who was, said that our job as a township is to provide a public good, a service, and, and that's kind of the view that, that has to be taken. We haven't talked about investment that is happening, ironically, by Chinese businesses in US paper companies, but those are going to come online, six months from now, 12 months from now, 18 months from now. So what currently is a really low, depressed market will change. It will come back, but fundamentally, you have to get comfortable with the fact that there's a service you're providing in it, and it costs money.
Right now, it's not profitable, though. Recycling is not profitable.
Recycling is a broad spectrum. There's lots of recycling that is profitable. If I'm a scrap metal dealer, if I'm an OCC paper, to be honest with you, if I'm a paper mill right now, I'm making a ton of money because I'm not paying anything for the feedstock, the recycled feedstock. But for you at the curb, it, it, it won't quote-unquote be profitable as you're thinking about it. It's a cost.
Well, I agree with you. Education is the key to continue this on, and, and I think Westland Mayor is correct. Even though he's setting everything down to the landfill, if he quits doing that and people forget about it, or don't care about it, or maybe there's no recycling bin out there, I don't know, it's going to be tough to get people back into the habit of recycling, even though it may be contaminated recycling, at least it's something there that, that would, would go to a recycling market. And you think you'll have those news stats in a month, a month and a half?
We have to report it to the state, and I have, I was, actually had a phone call into our engineering firm that helps put these together to find out when I have to have the report in. So, yeah, we should, we'll definitely have it within a month.
And the news release is going to be when on this new?
I, I'd love to tell you.
Sure you can.
You never know.
You know, and just sort of to build upon what Evan said earlier, you know, I, I like to believe in, you know, that necessity is the mother of invention. As, as these materials become very inexpensive, you know, I, I can't help but think that somewhere out there, there's someone who's going to say, you know, here's how I can make a buck off of this, and they're going to find a way to make this, that will drive this all over again. You know, and, you know, and bear in mind, in Michigan, I mean, I've heard, by the way, if you go on Eagles' website, every landfill operator has to post what they think their lifespan of their landfills are, and that does sort of change from year to year. But, you know, one, one issue here is that Michigan has a lot of landfill space, which sort of changes how recycling markets are compared to like, when you go on like the East Coast or the, yeah, in areas where they don't have that much landfill. It sort of drives recycling to divert away from those landfills. If you go to, what is, Jim, what's that landfill in New York? Fresh Kill?
Fresh, Fresh Kills in, actually on Staten Island.
Yeah, I mean, what's the, what's the tipping fee there compared to a Michigan landfill?
Well, Staten, you know, New York City's tipping fee, it's very impressive, the facilities, they spent 700 million to build a transfer station, but their tipping fees are 150 to 180 dollars a ton, a little different than the tipping fees here.
It's a lot less. And there, and therefore, in that market, the diversion away from that is, is more paramount.
Thank you.
Joe, I have a question, and Jim as well, if you might know the answer. Are you familiar with any local ordinances that might mandate apartment buildings participate in, in recycling, or at least contract? Is that something that you've seen locally? We talked a little bit about the municipality.
Right.
Bidding out and potentially providing recycling for multifamily units or mobile homes, but is, are you aware of anything, like an ordinance requiring apartments to provide recycling services?
Sure. You want to talk about Ann Arbor?
City of Ann Arbor, 20 years, I think, with multifamily. So with the college students, it's, it's 50, over 50% of our housing is rental. So both city ordinance requires recycling in multifamily and commercial, and then it's a function of how well it's enforced, but multifamily, I think, is done very well. Both the, you know, houses that look like regular houses that have recycling carts, but also the big apartments. About 30% of our housing is those big 500 units, and, you know, those have, you know, different kinds. It's not just carts. But again, you can make this work. Again, it takes a lot of, there's the enforcement side, and there's the education side.
Yeah. And Ann Arbor would very much be the exception rather than the rule. Most communities, I'm not aware of there being an ordinance requiring that, and in terms of like, as us as a hauler, it really does depend upon the, how this community bids the contract out and how it works in the contract, and I'm not aware of those provisions in your contract.
No.
No, they're not in your...
They're not in your contract.
Right.
No, I, I, and I was thinking more along the lines of letting the individual apartment complexes figure out who takes their recycling, let them determine that. We just make it conditional upon, if you want to operate in Canton Township, you would need to find somebody. But that was just, just something that popped into my head. Yeah, I'm grateful we're having this discussion in the last few years. It's, it's kind of crazy to me that what happened in the recycling market, A, happened, and B, it's like the greatest kept secret that wasn't really kept secret. It feels like we don't really do a good job as a society educating ourselves anymore about what's actually going on. We're kind of consumed with, our news, our news is really consumed with mostly national political news, and so these things that are really striking at the core of how we operate on a day-to-day basis are just completely blown past. People have no idea that China had changed, they had no idea that recycling material was piling up on our, in our nation's ports, had no idea that the entire industry had changed. And, and it's unfortunate, but it's good that we're having this conversation, and I hope that we do put an effort in and some energy into, into educating residents. And it's hard nowadays. I mean, we have the internet, right? So like, there's really no excuse for not knowing anything because we have access to 100% of the information out there at our fingerprints. The only barrier is our interest and our time, right? If I'm not interested, I don't have, you know, I don't have the time, then I'm not going to find out. But anyway, so I'm glad we're having this discussion. You know, it's very important to me, and obviously, it's pretty clear philosophically how I, how I view recycling, and I do tie it into the fact that I plan on being on this earth for quite some time. I just had a child as well, who I hope is going to be on this earth for quite some time, and the fact that today, we still think it's okay from a societal level to pull petroleum out of the ground halfway across the earth, or the water, use it for fuel, which is fine, but then use a byproduct to create plastic, then ship it over here, stamp it into something, put some type of product into it, ship it again to my house. I use it for, you know, five seconds, I throw it into the trash, or potentially the recycling, and then it goes back into either a landfill or gets reused. It's just, it's, it's an absurd, sometimes, process. It's extremely wasteful, and we just keep chugging along, we keep chugging along until a problem becomes so untenable, we are forced to deal with it. And I really encourage, A, everybody in Canton Township to, one, well, at this point, if you're still watching at this point, you're washing your recycles, recyclables, but to participate in the program. We've got to protect it, and we've got to ensure that we provide a good quality service to people, so that's it. ensure that we provide a good quality service to people, so that's it.
Jade, I want to thank you for putting this together, because I know we've been asking a long time. So thank you so much, I appreciate it. And education, I'm glad to hear we're going to be, you know, reaching out to our residents to educate them. We grew up with reduce, reuse, recycle, so hopefully we can push that on our residents. I know, like Ed said before, we have residents come buying more bins, we do pass out the list, and we always remind them, don't put the plastic bags in, so people want to recycle, and they, and they want to learn more. You know, we do what we can here at the township, but I'm looking forward to seeing more on the educational end of it, so thank you very much.
Thank you. It was a very good discussion, I learned a lot, and I'm looking forward to working on this issue.
Thank you all for coming, provided really good information tonight. I look forward to seeing the report from GFL with the data when that's ready. Look forward to seeing you come back in January. And Jade, I look forward to talking with you more and learning more about what you're thinking about educating the public, and what we as a board can do to help with that. To trustee Anne Marie's point earlier, that, you know, it takes seven times before people internalize a change, so make sure that we're repeating that as much as possible. You know, when communities and government first started talking about recycling, it was reduce, reuse, recycle, but recycling was really supposed to be like the last option, and we don't talk as much about reducing and reusing, and so I think as a society and as people, we need to get back to that, and as Michael pointed out, the single-use plastics, that's really not helping the situation with the landfills and the environment. Unfortunately, the state of Michigan made it illegal a few years ago for local government to reduce plastic bags and things like that, but we will do what we can.
So no other comments? Call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Those in favor of the motion is present, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, folks.
We'll be back.
Yep. Appreciate it.